Okay, welcome to the September 24th Santa Barbara County Planning Commission hearing. As I begin, though, I would first like to welcome and introduce our new planning commissioner, Kate Ford, representing the second district.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to be here today. Quite an honor to join you.
Great, thank you. I would like to begin, as is our custom, by inviting all to join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Villa Lobos, could you please make the TV coverage announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the commission. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on county Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Poak, Sunny Nez Valley, Samaria, and Oregon areas. Re-broadcasts of planning commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website, as well as the county's YouTube channel, and will be available for download in a day or two. Shall I move on to roll call?
Please.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Chair Reed?
Here.
And I believe Commissioner Park is just running a little late today. We expect him.
Oh, let's hope so. First item is the election of the 2025 Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. As you recall, Laura Bridley, who was second district commissioner and chair, has left and has been replaced with new commissioner Catherine Ford. You know, it is the custom of the Planning Commission for the position of chair to rotate through each district and last for a period of one year. We are currently in the year of second district representation. After this year, it will continue rotation through fourth district next year, followed by first district, third district, and fifth district, if I'm correct. But there's a standard procession. Therefore, since we are in the latter portion of a year in which second district is chairing the commission, I would think it would probably be appropriate for the new incoming second district commissioner to assume the role of chair for what would have been the balance of Commissioner Bridley's tenure. Is there any discussion with respect to that? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Temporary Chair. I realize this is an unusual situation. In the many years that I've been on the commission, I have not seen a change of commissioners like this, where the outgoing commissioner is not available chair. So as far as I'm concerned, if our newest commissioner is willing, I would support her being elected as chair.
Any further comment? Thank you. Any further comment? Now, okay, a question. Do I ask for a nomination or?
Chair and commissioners, that is correct. I think you already put a nomination out there, but if you want to do an official nomination, that would be appropriate, and then have it seconded, because this would be a motion to nominate Commissioner Ford, and then a second. And then, do you want to put it out there? We are missing Commissioner Park. So we could take action now, or we could trail this item until Commissioner Park, if the commission wants the full commission here to vote. Otherwise, we can proceed forward as regular business now.
Any discussion around delaying or just taking the vote now?
No, I think we can move forward.
I think we can move forward. Do we have a nomination?
I will nominate Kate Ford as chair for the balance of the current year.
I will second.
Would you like to do roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Chair Ford. Now, since my brief but glorious reign as chair has concluded, could I ask for a very brief recess so we can change places? Thank you.
And Chair and commissioners, just for the record, beings that Commissioner Ford, now Chair Ford, has been nominated and elected, the agenda does have election of the vice chair, but since that vice chair is going to remain the same, we don't need to have an election for the vice chair, and Commissioner Reed will remain as vice chair.
Do we need to be a formal thing?
That's why we turned off the cameras. Let's begin. Thanks very much for this vote of confidence and acceptance to this role. I'm going to do my best to serve you, all of you and the staff, and I need to count on you for your wisdom and your help throughout this process. Every public entity handles meetings a little differently, so I'm hoping that you'll help me with anything that is new in terms of tradition, as we continue with today's meeting. So the next agenda item is the Agenda Status Report. Mr. Wilson, your report on today's agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations on being nominated, elected as chair. Looking at the status of the agenda today, we have one item on the standard agenda, which is a presentation by the Long Range Planning Division on Streamlining and Housing Accommodation Ordinance Amendments, and it's a workshop today. And that's the only item we have on our agenda. Madam Chair, I can move to the projection report if you'd like.
Yes, please do that.
Looking at the projection report, our next hearing was scheduled for next week, October 1st. However, we canceled that at a prior hearing. So then, the next hearing after that is going to be on October 8th, and that will be in Santa Maria. And there are a number of items on that agenda. We have a government code consistency that's on the consent calendar. Then we did continue the Brick Barn Winery to October 8th from a prior hearing. And then we have the development plan for Keysight H. That'll be presented to the Planning Commission for recommendation. And then we have the continued environmental justice element of the comprehensive plan on that hearing as well. Again, that's going to be in Santa Maria on October 8th. And then following that, we have, our next hearing will be on October 29th, and that will be here in Santa Barbara. And then we have the telecom facility project before the commission on that date. And then we are scheduling the hearing on the workshop item for today, the Streamlining and Housing Accommodation Amendments on October 29th. Following October 29th, we have November 5th, which is, at this moment, has one item, which is a mixed-use project in the Los Alamos area. And then November 12th, we will be back in Santa Maria. As of right now, we have scheduled the workshop on the Recreation Master Plan to present policy language and draft ordinance for the commission and the community to review and comment on. And then on December 3rd, we'll be back in Santa Barbara with three items, an appeal of a single-family dwelling, and then also general zoning ordinance amendment package for the 2025 year. That's December 3rd here in Santa Barbara. And then on December, we have nothing else projected for the remainder of the year, for December 10th or the 17th, other than we will probably be working with everybody's calendars on our much anticipated planning commissioners' holiday luncheon, where the director likes to provide a great presentation and speech. I just ad-libbed that. That's smart. She's working on interpretive dance for that one. Anyway, that concludes the projection report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, do I also turn it over to you for any general public comment on any items that are not on our agenda today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That would go back to Mr. Villa Lobos.
Hello, Mr. Villa Lobos. May I ask you, do we have any public comment?
Madam Chair, I have not received any speaker slips, but for any of those attending online, if this is, you have anything you'd like to speak on that's not on today's agenda, raise your virtual hand. I'll call on you. Seeing no hands raised, but I did want to remind the commission that I did distribute two general public comment letters, one from Janet Stitch, and one, and a second letter from multiple groups, but it was submitted by the EOC, EDC, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. With that, it seems as we should go on to planning commissioners' informational reports, and I'll check with my colleagues. Do any of my colleagues have informational reports to share? Seeing none, I'll just, oh, please, sorry. Thanks for reminding me.
Three things. One, the reference to general comment, general comment letters. One was from EDC, and it relates to our upcoming meeting on, is it the?
John, can you, I'm sorry, can you speak closer to the mic?
Yes. The EDC letter relates to the hearing on the environmental justice element, and it's a specific request to have a, I don't know, I'd almost call it an ancillary or re-calendered planning commission hearing in order to hear testimony from people who cannot make it to our daily hearings and who speak Spanish and have translation. It's a matter close to my heart, because I made the same proposal a couple of years ago in a somewhat different fashion. And the idea, of course, is that many of the people that are in those small communities that are affected by the environmental justice element can't really testify about it, testify about what additions they'd like to have, or just their general support for it, which I think would be important. So I'm just wondering how we will deal with that letter. Will we deal with it at the time of the hearing, or, which is maybe a little too late, or will we discuss it in some fashion ahead of time?
I have a question for county council.
Okay.
And I still, I'm recused from that item, so if there's going to be any kind of discussion on it now, I should probably leave, and somebody call me back.
You can do that.
Okay, yeah, I think it's.
This is just procedural. I don't think it's substantive in any manner. If you want to leave, fine.
To be clear, so this is not on the agenda, so the commissioner can ask questions or ask for clarifications, which has occurred, but it's not on the agenda, so it's not open for discussion. So I think it can remain. It's just a clarification.
And Commissioner Park through the chair, I think we could reopen the agenda, a projection or the projection report, and talk about it a little bit under there, and because it is a future hearing, we're talking about a future hearing, and we're talking about the timing of, at what time of day that hearing would be held. The scheduling item, we could talk about.
Point of clarification, Commissioner Park was talking about translation or also changing the time?
Oh, the letter refers to.
Which was referred to in the letter, okay.
Yeah.
I'm actually. I'm actually, I'm not even responding to, I'm not referring to either thing. I'm referring to responding to the letter, which asks for a number of things, and those are included in the letter.
Yeah, yeah. I will just speak to the translation issue. We provide translation anytime it's requested, so we can have translation available at any hearing. So, we just need to know if somebody's attending that needs, that wants translation. So now, we've heard that there's an interest in having translation at the hearing, so we can make that available.
I received a follow-up phone call, or actually, it was a call that came to me from EDC before I even saw the letter. And I asked them, are there really going to be people at this hearing that would need this, or is this just abstract? And they said, no, there's really some people that want to speak. But I would note, from my own experience with Planning Commission hearings, we had this with Cat Canyon, we had it with other things, where there's translation, we really get bogged down. It can take a lot of time. Sometimes the translation, I know, because Bob left a manual, the translation is not very accurate. Sometimes, it's just a, it's a burdensome thing. So, innovative hearing ideas that might allow satellite hearings and deal with the translation in kind of a quicker manner are worth considering. Even though I know we will provide translation.
So, do we want to reopen that? Yeah.
So, that's what we would try to do today, is reopen the projection report. Madam Chair, can I suggest we handle that after we finish our informational reports and so forth?
That's fine.
Okay, let me go on with the other informational things I wanted to report on. One is Farm Day, and Commissioner Reed is not recused from discussing that, so I'd hope to hear from you on that as well. It was well-attended by county people. I bring that up because having folks from the South County, including Director Plowman, our DA, John Svarnik, and others, it means a lot to North County people to see you there paying attention. Farm Day, I've been to, I think, every one of them over the years. This, to me, was the best so far. I was extremely impressed by the Richardson Center, the Training Center. It's something people just should know about, how we're, in a sense, transitioning a whole generation of people that are, and I'm oversimplifying here, children of pickers and migrant workers to middle-class jobs and making jobs available for them and making training available. And you don't get that kind of training without specific vocational training like that is offering. And we met, as we toured the next facility, we met a young man whose parents were pickers, and today, he's the ranch manager, you know? So, it's inspiring and uplifting. Whatever your politics are, we can all agree that's a wonderful thing to have happen. So, much impressed by Farm Day. Last thing, this involves Second District and Third District. I'm only reporting on this, not that I want to think we can even have satisfaction on the issue that's arisen today, but that it may be, is something we consider on how to avoid it in the future. To wit, I'm speaking of the Ocean Meadows Project. I'm sure you've heard about this in the last few days quite a bit. Since my sheep were out at the North Campus Open Space, I went by that project every other day for the, about the last month and a half, and saw it get its final construction finishing, and it's populating by students. As I was pulling my sheep out, I noticed, okay, now I was seeing students sunbathing on the rooftops, which you can only access by climbing over the balconies and a lot of racket and so forth. And I thought, oh, my goodness, what has happened here? Because this was a project we were all extremely excited about. I was in particular, because it was a project that was going to provide housing on the edge of Isla Vista for professors, for management employees of UCSB, middle-management people of the big tech firms that are out there. And it was sold two years ago to a company that's turned it into student housing. And these, what I thought were three-bedroom houses are now advertised as five-bedroom houses, and they rent by the bed. There's nothing wrong with student housing, but we have a shortage of housing for other folks. But what the complaint is, and this is being registered at the Third District Office, and I wouldn't be surprised if it's registered at the Second District Office, is noise and disturbance to the neighbors who live along the north side of the campus, open space. The project itself used to be in the Third District. It's now in the Second District. The North Campus Open Space is in the Second District, but the houses that are complaining are in the Third District. That's why it's sort of our mutual problem. I doubt we can solve that today unless somebody has just genius that's unsurpassed, but I think we ought to have a discussion in the future as to how, when we consider something at the Planning Commission, we can ensure we get a project that, when it's finished, is sort of resembles what we thought it was going to be, at least for the usage. Because if I'd known this was going to be nothing but student housing, I would have had a very different position back when we dealt with this. Okay, I'd love to hear a response from Director Plowman.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think Director Plowman can touch briefly on this during the Director's Report, but again, as Council has indicated, we're not agendized to go into depth on this particular item. And again, it does cross lines, that does have some impact to the commission, but also under Director Plowman's purview under permit compliance and enforcement. So, again, if we want to talk about it at length, we would need to agendize something for this.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear about it sometime, but I have to bring it up in some manner, and so I have today. And we're getting a lot of heat at the Third District Office right now, and probably the Second District about this. So, at least people will know we have something to say about it, that the Planning Commission didn't blow it four or five years ago.
Thanks so much. Commissioner Reed?
If I could take just a minute, I will kind of tack on to the informational report that Commissioner Park gave with respect to Ag Day. You know, there are also Ag Day sites, Farm Day sites, in the South County. And I think all are of great value in affording people of the general public who may not be so acquainted with ag and the modern technologies and processes that occur there with respect to operations, employment, food safety, and other issues. And it really helps them, I think, build a more realistic perspective than they are often given by news, the media, and groups that would like to influence their point of view. So, a very valuable resource that everyone should take advantage of the ability to participate in.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney or Commissioner Martinez, any comments?
I'm sorry, I was lazy in not turning my light off.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
None for me.
I'll just mention that I've had the opportunity for a number of orientation meetings with Mr. Villa Lobos, Mr. Nelson, Ms. Plowman, Director Plowman, and Mr. Tuttle. And I'm so grateful for all your time. On to the minutes of August 27th and September 3rd. Do we consider them separately?
If you like, yeah. You can do them together, or you can do them individually.
Well, let's see if there's a motion to do them together, to approve the minutes of the 27th of August and September 3rd. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion for the September 3rd meeting, because I was present, but I can't join the 27th minutes with that. So, it's, my motion is strictly to approve the minutes as presented for the August 3rd meeting.
Okay, that's fine, we'll do them separately. Is there a second for September 3rd's meeting, meeting minutes?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. All in favor? Do we take a roll call on this?
You can do, you can just say all, yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And now for the minutes of August 27th, please. Is there a motion to approve those?
And Madam Chair, just...
Yes.
Just as we discussed this before, there was a correction to that set that was made offline. So, just for those who are looking at page, this is on page one. The motion to cancel the hearing of October 1st, 2025. Commissioners Cooney and Martinez are indicated as abstaining from that vote, so that should be absent and not abstained.
Thank you for that correction. Commissioner Martinez, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes of August 27th, please. Signify with aye.
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 And all abstain, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That takes us on to the Director's Report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Today, I would like to provide some remarks about Farm Day. I have attended the last two years, and every time I leave, I learn something new, and actually, I really enjoy myself. You know, you think, oh, Saturday, I have to go to, you know, an event, blah, blah, blah. But I always have a great time. The first year, it encouraged me to plant garden beds. They let us create little seedlings and plant them. And then, this year, they took us out into the berry fields and taught us about what happens and how berries get to the market. And we learned stories about families, generations and generations of families working in farming and what their experience is like, housing issues with farming. So, it's always really interesting, and the Richardson Center is amazing, where kids can come over from the high school and take these sort of vocational classes. It was really quite spectacular. And then, you can get some inexpensive veggies, and you have a great time. So, I definitely encourage everybody to take the opportunity to attend next year. And it's great that South County is getting more involved, because I don't remember there being South County sites last year. But this year, there were some in San Diego, and there were some in South County. And so, the community can attend these farms and get some, learn about how they operate those farms. So, very, very informative and interesting and enjoyable day. Just to touch base quickly on this question about the Cove, we're aware of what's going on, we're looking to it, and there's probably some enforcement issues. I don't want to speak too much to it about, you know, the county doesn't have the ability to control whether something remains for sale or whether something becomes a rental project. So, that is a decision by the landowner. It's created some serious challenges in this instance, but the department is working with both the Second and the Third District to resolve those issues. So, I just wanted you to know that. Cannabis ordinance amendment that was at the Coastal Commission was approved on September 11th. It has modifications to it, so we're going to bring those modifications. They're minor, they're not that meaningful in terms of the impact of the ordinance. That'll go back to the board on the 21st of October to accept those ordinance, or the modifications from the Coastal Commission, and then will be sent back, and then they will give the final approval of it. The housing element rezones in the coastal zone are... We're working with Coastal Commission staff right now. Looks like we're going to try and get to hearing. We were hoping to get to hearing in October. We have some issues we need to work out, so it may go in November. So, we have four sites that the county rezoned as part of the housing element update that are in the coastal zone. And so, those will be under consideration. And so, we've had, we're working cooperatively with staff, so things are looking positive. So, that's good news, very good news for us. Then, we had the Bidwell Appeal that had been something that the Planning Commission had heard. That was scheduled to go to the board in September and was ultimately withdrawn, so that is put to rest, which is good news. That was in Hope Ranch. The Sutar Appeal of the housing in Isla Vista was at the board on the 9th, and I'm, I don't think I reported on this to you yet, but that got continued, and the Second District is trying to work with the developer to see if there are any modifications that can be made to the project to address some of the concerns in the, in the community. And then, we provided a response to the grand jury report that was produced on housing. So, the grand jury prepared a letter on housing that was addressed to the county and all the cities on the South Coast, basically identifying the housing crisis and making some recommendations about what each of these jurisdictions ought to do to help facilitate housing. A lot of those things are already in place because of all the new state laws. So, that's a good thing. I mean, we have, because of the housing element update and the rezones, we do have actual ministerial permits for some of the housing projects. So, that was one of the recommendations. So, that response was presented to the board, and the board sent over a response to the grand jury. I see a question pending. Do you have a question, Commissioner Park?
Yes. The items that got, the rezoning that's before the Coastal Commission, what are those for? Which four are those?
So, that was the Baylord property that the Housing Authority is working on with Redtail, two properties that are owned by the Van Wingerdens, and one property in Isla Vista called Friendship Manor, the vacant lot in Isla Vista.
But none of the big Galita projects?
No, 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 those were all inland.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I mean, our objective was to try and find sites in the easternmost portion of South County, because there are a lot of farm workers and a lot of people that need housing in that region, too. And so, that was one of the objectives, is making sure we could try and spread some of the housing demand out across the South County. Or supply, I mean. So, the other item I want to mention is the future board items. And that is, as I mentioned, the Coastal Commission mods to the cannabis ordinance amendment on 10/21. Also on 10/21, we are coming to the board with an oil and gas item. This is something that's been directed by the board. This is both Planning Development and Community Services Department coming back jointly to receive direction on how to proceed regarding new regulations about future oil and gas facilities and the possible amortization of oil and gas facilities over some period of time, thus resulting in no oil and gas operations in Santa Barbara County. So, that board letter will also, per the request of District Four, provide background information on the number of orphaned wells in the county. Those are wells that have been, basically, that, like Greka, the company went bankrupt, and they just sort of left their facilities in place and abandoned them. I don't like to use the word abandoned, because that has another meaning in this context, but Calgem, that the state is responsible for formally abandoning those wells once something is left, is orphaned by a particular company. So, we'll get information on the orphaned wells and what's remaining, and then wells that are idle. So, oil and gas companies will temporarily stop using a well, and it could be idle for two years, it could be idle for five years, and then they could bring it back into operation. So, we're going to be providing information on what wells are currently idle there. And I know this isn't an item on our agenda, so I won't go on too long about it, but there is a program in Kern County now, I believe, that was recently approved, where Kern County gives people a new well if they formally abandon two existing wells. So, it's a way to sort of phase out the old wells and reduce the number of idle wells that are in the camp. that are in the community. So I think the Fourth District has some interest in talking about that in the context of this potential change to our regulations regarding oil and gas. So if you're interested in that, I recommend monitoring the 21st of October. And then we have our overhaul of our fee ordinance, which is going to be now going in December. And I'm just going to, we're looking at bringing back a local preference item to the Board for some discussion before the end of the year, and we haven't picked a date yet. And that's my report.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Is this where we would return to the projection report?
I think you have another question.
Oh, sorry.
Look to the right, look to the left, and you'll see the lights.
Yeah.
They used to be right there, which was really the way to do it because you could see them.
I appreciate that, yes, I've seen them done differently.
That oil and gas item, has that ever come in front of us?
Depends on what codes might be changed as part of that.
Gotcha. But certainly not at this preliminary stage.
Not at this preliminary stage.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no other comments, is this where we would re-address projection report?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, you can bring back the projection report for discussion at this time if you would like, or we could trail it to the end of the presentation by Long Range Planning and address it right before we adjourn today. So I defer that back to the Commission on what their pleasure is as far as talking about scheduling special hearings right now, or if you want to trail it after the item on the standard agenda.
Let's do it now, it's fresh on our mind.
I need to recuse myself, so.
That's fine, thank you.
Someone can call me perhaps when it's time to come back.
Madam Chair, as we go back to the projection report, I do want to indicate that Mr. Tuttle, the Deputy Director of Long Range Planning Division, who is over that project, might want to provide some insight before we start talking about scheduling. So if you wanted to hear from Mr. Tuttle first, that might help the discussion for the Commission.
I appreciate that. Mr. Tuttle, do you have some comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. So in regards to the letter that was referenced by Commissioner Park, we have had a follow-up conversation with the author of that letter and the organizations they represent. We've proposed a couple ways in which we can attempt to accommodate their request short of holding a nighttime hearing because of the logistical challenges of that. A couple of things we've discussed are a concept of having people submit prerecorded comments that we can air during the hearing for those who are unable to attend in person. Other things we've discussed are just working with those organizations who were part of that letter to work with their constituents and their community members to encourage written comments on the project. And then I just did want to note, we are in the process of working with the county's translation services to have translation available at the hearing. And then the last thing your Commission could consider as a way to try to facilitate greater participation, or easier participation at least, is potentially a time certain for that item so that folks aren't having to kind of wait around or try to guess as to when it might come up, and perhaps either at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day. Might be a way in which to facilitate easier participation. All of them, none of them are perfect, and it is challenging. We can make various attempts to try to encourage public participation. As you can see today, it's difficult. We can only do so much. But those are just some things for your information that you can consider as you discuss this further.
When there have been items like this, I wonder if there's ever been a greater attempt at spreading the word about the meeting and the time?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I mean, we do notice broadly, we have an interested parties list, we send out email blasts, I believe there is a press release, we do newspaper ads. So we make every attempt to try to get the word out. And sometimes it's successful and other times it's not.
I understand, thanks for enumerating them. Any comments? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Tuttle, I always appreciate your input as we face difficult matters, and this is certainly among them. But it strikes me that we have to make a decision sort of subject by subject as to when it should be held. I would not like to see the Planning Commission change its typical meeting times to the evening on a regular basis because I think there is a lot of history and a lot of good evidence that we do our best work during the workday. And unless there is an impossibility of people participating by one of our methods that we've worked on, I don't want to encourage people to just come if it happens to be at a certain point in time. There are ways that they can notify us of their feelings and preferences. And of course, staff is at the very front of receiving that information and can share it with the Commission whenever we do meet. Just an overall comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Martinez, please.
Yeah, I would just like to make the note that I agree with Commissioner Cooney about the timing, that I wouldn't be one that would be really in favor of moving the times that we typically have our meetings in regards to it. We ourselves are volunteers and we give up our time and our efforts in regard, at least I do, in regards to my work efforts. And I think it's just a traditional set that this is when we have our meetings and people can appear. I think their matter of appearance is really up to the Chair, because I know this came up to me when we had something where people wanted to attest during video and it came down to me saying yea or nay to it. But that's why I would say I would like to just keep the timing of our meetings during the day as when we have them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Clark?
I join with my fellow Commissioners in my concern about changing the timing of our meetings. I think it would open a Pandora's Box and just not be that useful. But I want to reiterate the proposal I made a few years ago. No one here on the Commission was there at the time other than Commissioner Cooney. And it picks up on something that Mr. Tuttle referred to, and that is prerecorded testimony. And the idea was that since we have our hearings on a Wednesday, that say on a Monday night, you have a planning commissioner or someone from P and D sets up a hearing site in, say, Guadalupe or Nukwama, some remote site that's easier for some of these folks to get to, and they testify. It's recorded. It's not translated at that moment because it's not needed to be translated, okay? Now you have a tape, it's not a tape anymore, but a digital file, and you can translate it in a more leisurely fashion and more efficiently. And then what you do is you show that recording, that prerecorded testimony, to the Planning Commission at its normal meeting, at its normal hours. They're not going through all the slow, difficult procedure of the translation because it's all been done offline, so to speak. So they get, they hear the testimony, they hear a translation, not all the awkward things in between. I think that would be efficient. It would solve the problem of people being able to come in the evening hours, those who need to testify, and to come to a site that's reasonably accessible to them and to be heard in their native language. I just think it's something we ought to consider and we would have a more democratic, open process. And then I think our credibility of our whole process would be enhanced by that.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Park.
So, sorry, Park.
So, Madam Chair, I mean, we hear the feedback. I think there are lots of technological advantages that we have today as to facilitate public comments. I mean, people could take out their phone, video themselves, and send it to Mr. Villalobos, and that's something that we could present. So there's a lot of options and we are eager to get their feedback, too. I mean, we want to hear from the community about what their interests are. And so we will be working together with translators and we can go ahead and talk to EDC and the groups that have an interest in having their people they represent participate and try and find the right avenue for that.
I appreciate that. I think there's clearly an earnest interest on our part and also on staff's part to make sure that as many options for translation are available, and so I leave that to you.
Madam Chair, if we're concluded with this conversation, maybe we can take just a short break so I can give Commissioner Reed a call to rejoin us.
That's fine. Let's reconvene. Welcome back, Commissioner Reed. And this leads us to our main topic for today's meeting, which is a report on the proposed amendments to the Land Use and Development Code and the Coastal Zoning Ordinance. I will turn it over to Mr. Villalobos.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just, I'll try to briefly read this into the record quickly so we can start the presentation. The County Planning Commission will receive and file a report from the Planning and Development Department regarding proposed amendments to the Land Use and Development Code and Coastal Zoning Ordinance related to ordinance streamlining and housing accommodations, as well as provide feedback to staff regarding the proposed amendments and determine that the recommended actions are not a project that is subject to environmental review under SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15378B5, finding that the actions consist of administrative activities of government that will not result in direct or indirect physical changes in the environment.
Thank you, please, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, just a couple words before the staff begins their presentation. This is a unique format. We don't often have workshops, but the point of this effort is to get the Commission and the public familiarized with the kinds of changes that we're recommending be made to our zoning ordinances. And they're sweeping in some areas and complex, and so we have Martha Miller, our consultant here, who's helped us develop these boards and work on our program with us. She's a very experienced consultant in overhauling zoning ordinances. Our ordinances are quite complex, and in some places they conflict, in some places they're redundant, and so she is helping us with that effort. Today's workshop is really focused on two different things. One is a streamlining effort where we can simplify some of the things in our zoning ordinance and get rid of some of the redundancies that we have, and the staff is going to go over that with you. So it's like a massive cleanup effort for our codes. And then the second component is responding to some of the programs in our housing element that direct us to make changes to our code to either facilitate state law or overhaul our old zoning, our own zones, like our multifamily housing zone and our commercial zones, the districts, because they were written some time ago, you know, maybe 30, 40 years ago, and they need to be modernized to allow us to develop the types of housing that we need to meet the demand that the state is asking the county to meet, which is our arena allocation. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Tuttle.
Could I ask a quick question? Okay, with the state's requirements being put upon us, are those exceptions to our existing law, or are they now existing law? In other words, are they going to exist for a certain period of time? Do they have a timeline on them? Or are they just presented as an exception?
Commissioner Martinez through the Chair. So I will have Alex respond to this partially, too. But when there's a state law that has a timeframe on it, like sometimes SB 35.
Sunset clause, yeah.
There's a sunset clause. We don't typically have to make a lot of changes to our code to accommodate for that, but there are state laws that went into place that are permanent, right? And so we do make those changes. But would you like to share your thoughts on that, Mr. Tuttle?
Commissioner Martinez through the Chair. Yeah, just to add to that, for the state laws that do have a sunset clause or expiration date, often we will just refer to the statute in our code if necessary so that if, because what we've seen happen is state laws that have an expiration date keep extending or disappearing entirely. So in order to avoid having to update our code as, like on a near weekly basis, sometimes we'll just refer to whatever the state law requires so that our code kind of remains a bit more agile in that regard. But what we're talking about today, these would be changes that would be kind of permanent into our code, kind of regardless of what changes might happen at the state level.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
So, yes, good morning, Commissioners. As Ms. Plowman indicated, we are here today in somewhat of an unusual format. We're looking at this more of a study session. We understand that it's a lot of material and a lot of concepts to discuss with you today, and we certainly don't expect you or members of the public to have fully absorbed all the information. What we're hoping to accomplish today, and the reason we set it up as a workshop as opposed to a hearing, is we want to take the pressure off. You're not expected to take any action today other than to kind of receive the information. And then we'll be coming back to you at a later date for the actual public hearing to move the project along. So really, we're looking at this as a study session. We're going to give a sort of high-level overview of the key components of all the changes and provide opportunities for dialogue, questions and answers, comments from your Commission. And hopefully, you'll leave the meeting today with just a better understanding and familiarity with the scope of the work and use that as a launching point for preparing for when we do come back at a later date. So as Ms. Plowman indicated, this is part of a So as Ms. Plowman indicated, this is part of a larger effort we've undertaken to modernize, clean up, update our zoning code. Really, it's been three prongs to our zoning ordinance amendment. We have the technical updates. We have updates to accommodate housing, and then we have process improvement, which is like looking at streamlining efforts, simplifying, cleaning up our code. And so the technical updates we've completed, those were updates to our lighting and sign regulations that your commission and board voted on last year, earlier this year, as well as an overhaul to our shopping center zone. We ended up just eliminating our shopping center zone because it was outdated and rezoning all those sites to C2, general commercial. So what we're here to discuss today is what we considered the Phase Two again, which is housing accommodation and various process improvement components. So, yeah, as I discussed, the technical updates are complete, and so we can check that Phase One off and move forward into Phase Two. Phase Two, just very high level on the housing accommodation, there are two programs in our housing element that asked the county to remove governmental barriers and reduce constraints to development, particularly development of housing. So it's kind of focused in two areas. One is our multifamily residential zones to make sure projects can be built at the densities, the densities that the sites were rezoned to. And the other is in our commercial zones to facilitate more mixed-use housing where appropriate, which has been a challenge up to this point. And then on the process improvement side, it's really looking at various aspects of our permit review process and procedures, trying to simplify, streamline, clarify where possible without necessarily affecting the overall outcome of the project. Standardized language where possible, remove redundancies and obsolete provisions of the code. We have hundreds and hundreds of pages within our zoning codes and, well, looking to make a decent dent, maybe bring that down into the 500 pages versus 700-page range. So we're going in the right direction. This is something the board had directed us to do a couple of years ago, to just try to overhaul our ordinance and improve our processes and procedures. The future or last phase of this work, which we'll be coming back to your commission next year, is on looking at making more project types truly ministerial. And what that means is something that would be at the staff level based on objective standards, either you meet them or you don't, and if you do, then you get your permit and you go on. So basically amendments to reduce unnecessary processing, to just reduce costs, reduce time, and make it easier for projects to get through the process. So that is our sort of last phase of our ordinance overhaul. And as I mentioned, we're starting to work on that internally, but it won't be ready for primetime until sometime next year. So I'd like to introduce our consultant, Martha Miller. She's, as Ms. Plowman indicated, she's been working with us very closely to, on this effort, and she will give the rest of the presentation. And then at the end of the presentation, before we start, before we stop, we'll kind of lay out what we anticipate the rest of the morning to look like in terms of how public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions and get some input from your commission. So with that, I'll hand it over to Martha.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's good to be before you today, introducing you to this voluminous package of amendments that we prepared. I'll start with describing the amendments related to housing accommodation. And again, these are amendments that are intended to implement your housing element programs to revise development standards to enable the achievement of the allowed densities in those zones and to modernize the multifamily and commercial zone standards. So they include amendments to a number of district development regulations, and I'll go through kind of a summary of each one for each district. I'll highlight the substantive changes to standards. There's also a number of amendments that are really related to standardization, simplification of the standards, removal of redundancies or obsolete requirements. So we want to highlight that there is a lot of cleanup, and that's where you get a lot of the volume that you have in the amendments. But again, I will focus on the substantive, more substantial substantive amendments. So beginning with your residential zones, and the primary zones that you have that accommodate multifamily residential development are your DR, your design residential, and your PRD, your planned residential development zones. And both of these zones accommodate a wide range of densities, anywhere from .1 units per acre to 40 units per acre, depending on location. So the current development standards for these zones are really, reflect a low-density suburban-type development, which really made sense because up until your recent housing element update rezones, those lower-density areas really made up like 99.5% of the areas in these zones. So that's what the standards were really tailored to. However, if you rezone properties for higher densities now, including increased densities of up to 40 units per acre, in some cases, those standards don't really match that housing type or that development type and can really create a barrier to achieving those densities. So with the amendments, we look at, in a way, creating two sets of standards that apply based on density. The standards that apply to areas that have an allowed density of less than 20 units per acre, really, we're standardizing and simplifying that language. At those types of allowed densities, you're going to have more of a detached housing product, which your standards largely work for. But for areas that allow densities of 20 units per acre or more, some adjustments to the standards, reducing the required front setback from 20 feet to 10 feet and increasing the allowed height from 35 feet to 45 feet. Again, that's just expanding the development envelope to provide some more flexibility for these areas that were particularly intended for multifamily housing. For all of the areas, eliminating the 30% site coverage zone, this is removed to help enable allowed density, but this standard is also somewhat redundant as cumulatively as you apply all your development standards for landscaping, parking, setbacks, open space, those all collectively limit open lock coverage. So it's kind of a redundant standard. The approach to open space is proposed to be changed, or the approach to required open space, which is right now based on a percentage of site area. We're looking at moving that to a minimum amount per unit, and I'll go into more detail on that in the next couple of slides. And then also just deleting obsolete redundant standards that no longer apply or are relevant based on current context. Before I get into the open space, I just want to give a sense of where these properties are that allow for density of 20 units per acre or more. Just a little context, all of these properties are either already developed, subject or had pending project in place, and/or were subject of the recent housing element rezones. The areas of the rezones are outlined in green. So we know exactly where these properties are located throughout the county. Vandenberg Village, some in Santa Ynez, again, an already-developed site, as well as a site that's part of the rezone. County site north of Golita, part of the rezone, the Isla Vista that was mentioned, the site in the coastal zone, some throughout eastern Golita, some near Carpinteria, these again are ones in the coastal zone, and then New Cuama. So currently, the approach to open space or the current requirement is that 40% of the site is required to be in open space, which again is kind of reflective of those lower-density development patterns. And it's also a somewhat outdated approach as it was, it covers a number of objectives. It covers environmental protection, it covers landscaping, it covers buffers, it covers amenity space. And right now, all areas of the site that aren't covered by a structure or a walkway or their parking hard surface really is included, counts towards that quote-unquote "open space" requirement. Moving forward, the proposal is to focus that open space requirement as an amenity space that comes along with typically a multifamily, you think of multifamily development. But focus on the amenity space, there's other standards, rules, regulations, policies that you have in place that address environmental protection, that address landscaping, that address buffering, that address some of those other objectives that you have. The amount per square footage is kind of dependent on the kind of density pattern or that type of development that would occur. So 200 square feet per unit for less than 20 units per acre. Again, this is our more the detached housing product, and the open space requirement isn't as, I would say, as much of a priority, whereas in multifamily, when you get more of that attached project, you're looking at how is this some common and private open space for those higher-density housing types. So that has a requirement of 60 square feet per unit. A minimum of 25% of the open space needs to be provided as common open space that's shared by all of the residents. Also, there's configuration standards where you can't just, you know, count any green space as this open space. It really has to be usable, has to meet minimum dimensional requirements, and have other, again, be real usable as an amenity. So just visual, just a prototype kind of site development, if we look at what does this kind of look like? So looking at this prototype site development of 25 units per acre, the middle image is what today would qualify as open space. Again, anything on the site that's not a building or pavement. But then with the new standards, what would qualify is really open space that count, that provides that amenity space and meets those requirements. So that's not to say that the rest of the site gets covered with structures or paving. There are still requirements for landscaping setbacks. You have environmental protection-ish policies and requirements for that kind of protected space or open space, other sensitive habitat protections, building separation, and so So now if we move into the other zones, first with commercial and special purpose zones, the amendments again are to overall simplify standards, make them easier to use and understand, modernize the standard, standards to facilitate housing in commercial areas consistent with the housing element update. So first, the neighborhood commercial or your CN zone. So this zone typically includes neighborhood-serving or smaller-scale commercial areas near, oftentimes near residential or other developed areas. Some examples include Montecito Village, the Los Olivos Grocery, some commercial properties in Ballard. In this zone, there is already residential development allowed. You have kind of an odd standard for that or not allowance, whereas it's based on bedrooms per commercial square footage, which is hard to implement. No one really kind of understands what that looks like. It's not a common metric to use for that. So we're changing that to density allowance and mixed-use development based on units per acre. So allowing 20 units per acre maximum, reflecting that smaller-scale character of the zones, but still at that level for mixed-use development. Reducing the front setback in these zones to actually accommodate what is a typical or in some of your areas, the historic development pattern of commercial uses located at the street frontage. Eliminating that site coverage limitations to allow achievable density or enable achievement of allowed density, and then requiring non-residential uses on the ground floor along the street frontage to retain that commercial street frontage. Residential uses can be on the upper story or behind that, behind non-residential uses. Very similar to your CN zone is your C1 zone. This only appears in four locations throughout in the county. It's very similar to the CN zone when, main difference is that single-family residential development is allowed as a primary use if there's no commercial development on site. So that's why you'll see in some of these areas just a single-family home. Similar changes, limiting the density to 20 units per acre rather than bedrooms per commercial square footage, reducing that front setback, requiring non-residential uses along the street frontage, except for that caveat where there's no commercial use on site, retaining that allowance for single-family. As we move up kind of one level in your spectrum of commercial zones to the retail commercial zone or your C2, this is a little, get a little larger sites, more community-scaled commercial properties. Some examples are Magnolia and Turnpike Shopping Centers in eastern Golita, some commercial areas along Clark Avenue in Orkut. Here, it also currently has that odd residential standard. We're translating that to units per acre, having these as kind of the larger sites, more community scale, 30 units per acre maximum to reflect that kind of scale in these areas. There are also minimum requirements for non-residential uses in the draft amendments. It's at a minimum of 25% needs to be non-residential, and then there's limits on the residential square footage. The idea behind this is to allow mixed use while retaining the commercial nature of the area. There's also an additional height allowance from 35 feet to 45 feet for mixed-use development that's located more than 50 feet away from lower-density residential zone to, again, accommodate some potential for housing and addressing some compatibility. Moving then up one, another level in your commercial spectrum is the general commercial zone or your C3 zone. These are more kind of regional-serving. You get some heavier commercial or service uses. Some examples include properties along 101 or Leslie Street in Los Alamos. Some have self-storage units. While these currently allow housing, they aren't the focus of your housing efforts moving forward. So we're still looking at modernizing the standards here, but a little bit different, limiting residential density to one unit per 1,000 square feet of commercial development rather than that two-bedroom metric. Also, limiting residential floor area to 50% of the total gross floor area. Again, these are your commercial areas. They do allow some housing, but we want to retain and ensure that principal use on site remains commercial. The community mixed-use Los Alamos or your CM LA zone, this is in one area, it's your Bell Street corridor, again, translating density to units per acre, the 20 units per acre to reflect that small-scale character, but still allow for some mixed-use housing. And there's a lot of cleanup in these standards, really just simplifying them, but continuing to require that commercial street frontage along the Bell Street corridor. Your professional institution zone, kind of similar to your C3 zone. It is a zone that allows housing, but it's not a primary focus of the county's housing accommodation efforts. These typically include educational or institutional, different public facility uses. So similar to the C3, limiting density to one unit per 1,000 square feet of commercial development and limiting that total gross floor area that can be dedicated to residential to 50%. And again, ensuring that the principal use remains And again, ensuring that the principal use remains commercial and/or professional. The mixed use zone, the MU zone, this is only located in one place in the county. It's along State Street west of the city, right where 154 and the 101 meet. So this is planned for mixed use development. A lot of amendments and cleanup in this area, in this zone, really to simplify, clarify the standards, make them more concise, and introduce some objectivity where there isn't some. For example, currently, the allowed density is just an as determined by the planning commission. So actually putting a metric on this, having a density allowance of 40 units per acre, simplifying setback requirements, putting them in a table, making them more accessible, increasing allowable height, 35 feet to 45 to accommodate that allowed density, and recognize that this is in kind of an area that doesn't have a lot of interface with lower density residential areas. Clarifying the open space requirement, again, there is some subjectivity in this, a little vague of requiring a common open space, putting some actual numbers to that, and then having those configuration standards as well. Establishing measurable criteria for a bunch of required non-residential uses along the street frontage, trying to provide some flexibility, but again, recognizing, maintaining and supporting the mixed use development with ground floor and active street frontage. Old Town Orkut has a combination of both base zones and overlay zones that interact together. One part of this is just a lot of cleanup. You had standard, the code had standards in these zones for densities that weren't allowed in the zone, so we took out the standards that really didn't apply, removed the requirement for 40% open space as when you look at the small, the existing small lot development pattern and the loud densities, you're really getting, you know, one, maybe up to in some cases, three units, but it is this small lot development pattern that you have. Removing the site coverage limitations to allow achievement of the density, and again, the collective, the cumulative of other standards really serve to limit the amount of site coverage that's achievable. Removing redundancies between the base zones and the overlay zones. There was a lot of kind of things that were similar and you weren't sure, you really had to kind of map it out to see if these standards were different or the same, so we simplified them, consolidated. Also relocating some overlay specific parking requirements from parking standards into the overlay to make that overlay kind of a one-stop shop of what was unique. The mixed use, San Inez Valley Overlay Zone, this is an overlay that's applicable to the C1 and C2 properties within the San Inez Community Plan. Clarifying language, just regarding the allowable parking reduction, that was depending on who read it, it took a little while to actually interpret what it meant, so we clarified that, and then simplified the limit on residential uses rather than make people do math and require 66%. It's just residential uses can be, or the, residential uses are simply limited to upper stories. So maintaining that commercial street frontage, that commercial viability of the area while allowing residential uses. Okay, as we move into the process improvement standards, this is really kind of the second category of amendments. These are amendments throughout the code to simplify the review process without compromising the outcome, standardizing language procedures, removing redundancies. So first, there's just a number of sections that were deleted because they're either obsolete, redundant, relocated, or otherwise no, not applicable. So for example, stormwater requirements are addressed by other regulations. The design compatibility standards are redundant with your land use element policies. Small animal hospital provisions, we moved into the use regulation table, so you're not flipping through, again, hundreds of pages of code to see what applies there. COVID-related provisions and some other voter approval provisions that expired, just really cleaning up these things that were making your code more complex and taking up real And there's revisions to a number of sections, three kind of sections that had a lot of revisions, landscaping standards, parking and loading standards, deleting redundant language, consolidating like provisions, reorganizing to improve functionality. Again, with these sections carrying the same, the standards, the substance of the standards forward, really making them function better, more clear, concise, in a more clear and concise manner. Home occupations, there's some clarification that home occupations can be operated within any enclosed primary accessory structures, then also for your, the Montecito Land Use and Development Code and the Coastal Zone Ordinance incorporating recent amendments that were made to the LUDC, so making those consistent. And then there's other miscellaneous text edits throughout the code, again, with that same purpose and idea of deleting redundancies and simplifying language. As we move on to the procedural kind of amendments, these are amendments to kind of go through cleanup procedures. Again, the intent is to not change the effectual, you know, what comes out of the procedures or the review, but to reflect either current practice or streamline that current, current process. So first, similar use determinations. These are things that, a use may not be listed in a code. So somebody comes in with a yoga, yoga studio, yoga studio is not listed in the code and it's determined to be similar to a use that is listed, such as a fitness center. So the amendments really reflect current practice as this, to an extent, happens on a daily basis. So just expanding it in the code, in the code, it was limited to certain districts. We expanded to include all districts. The decision maker is downshifted from the planning commission to the director, which, again, really codifies current practice, what typically happens throughout the day. The director may defer a decision to the planning commission, so if there's something that is really kind of odd and the director needs some input or feels that it would better be served by a higher level authority, the director may defer that decision to the planning commission. Which kind of brings me into that next amendment, including just a general provision that does enable the director to refer any application to the planning commission for decision wherein the director's opinion, the public interest would be better served by having the planning commission have a hearing, an action. That does require applicant consent in order to carry that out. Minor conditional use permits incorporate an option for the director to waive a public hearing requirement if, after public notice, so there's still public notice, if after public notice, a hearing is not requested. And that's similar to an option you have in place for coastal development permits and modifications. And the idea for that is if there isn't any concern expressed, then that would be a streamlined process for that. For development plans, so right now in many zones, the director does have the review authority for developments with a gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or less. There are some instances that says for any development, including a small addition, a development plan goes to the planning commission. So we're, the amendments incorporate a provision to allow the director to review small projects, structures and additions up to 1,000 square feet. So in those areas where it just kind of hasn't any development, to allow some flexibility for director approval. Also streamlining the process, right now you have a preliminary and a final development plan. Those are typically processed together anyway, so we've consolidated those. Land use permits and zoning clearances, both of these are processes to ensure that development conforms to applicable standards and any conditions of approval. Land use permits require public notice, zoning clearances do not. So the amendments clarify and codify that if a project already received public notice and either a hearing or opportunity for hearing, the zoning clearance is that follow-up permit to ensure the development conforms to the standards and the conditions of approval. So it takes out that kind of redundant process that was in some cases, notice, a project was going through public notice twice. Modifications, these are processes where certain, to allow consideration of certain limited modifications in certain zone districts, so they're really articulated exactly what and under what circumstances these modifications can be allowed. They're applicable only for projects that aren't otherwise subject to a conditional use permit or development plan. Looking at streamlining the process for these, they're typically, the modifications are typically minor and non-controversial and most hearings are waived. So rather than requiring notice and hearing by the zoning administrator, making the decision maker downshifting that to the director. And process concurrently with the land use permit or the coastal development permit to just improve efficiency. Still subject to design review unless design review is waived under the provisions for design review. Variance is not a lot of change unless a conditional use permit or development plan approval, it is processed concurrently with the land use permit or the coastal development permit. Design review, there's a couple of new exceptions that have been incorporated in the amendments for both related to accessory structures, one for accessory structures not visible from public roadways, and then one for detached accessories, less than 500 square feet in size and located behind another building or on the rear half of the lot. So some minor exceptions for that. Clarifying language for conceptual review, the timing of hearings, how that process works, and revised appeal process. So currently, a single project can be appealed through two redundant processes with the proposed amendments eliminating the appeal on the follow-up design review where the associated development application was already approved. So again, getting rid of that kind of redundant appeal process. Coastal development permits, so currently, unique to the county actually, coastal development permits are designated as appealable even when the permit is for non-appealable development. So just by default of being a coastal development permit, it's appealable. So the, and as, particularly as there's a number of state laws coming through that mandate ministerial review of projects, the county has been having to come up with these unique processes in order to meet that, that state law and that legislation. So with the amendments, we're incorporating a process for coastal development permits, a ministerial process for coastal development permits that are non-appealable. So if it's not in a coastal appeals jurisdiction, if it's not otherwise appealable for any other reason, they would be processed ministerial. And this is for accessory dwelling units, ground mountain solar installations and certain buy right housing projects. Again, all really, the impetus of this is the state mandates. Standardizing expiration dates and time extensions for conditional use permits and other associated applications. We'll go into this on another slide, but basically you were having sometimes multiple permits and approvals for one project that all expired at different times, so you want to coordinate and standardize those times. Also eliminating a redundant requirement for coastal, for a zoning clearance or a land use permit where the coastal development permit is issued by the county, those really are redundant processes as a coastal development permit has an approval stage and an issuance stage, and that issuance stage was the same, is essentially the same activity as the zoning clearance or the land use permit. So eliminating that redundant requirement. Development agreements, this is really just replicating LUDC provisions into the coastal zone ordinance to make it clear that they apply in the coastal zone. There's just some question about if you could do development agreements in the coastal zone even though it wasn't in the CZO, so we just replicated the provisions in there. Permit expirations and time extensions, I mentioned this a little bit with coastal development permits. Right now approvals have varied expiration dates, anywhere from one to five years depending on permit type. And it really wasn't uncommon for a single project to have multiple permits that have different dates. So the amendments establish a four-year approval, standard expiration date for planning permits. It's kind of reflective of current development context, how long it can take to go from approval to actually starting the construction or going through the building permit. Alternative time limits may also be approved through permit approval, but the standard or the default would be four years. And the director can grant a one-time extension of two years without public notice or hearing. Typically, time extensions are non-controversial and approved, are typically approved. Noticing provisions, consolidating those where possible, having standardized noticing requirements for various permits and approval. Right now, your code goes through kind of every permit type or every approval type and details the noticing procedures. When you go back and compare them, they're real similar, that, again, just simplifying, having a standard procedures, keeping the same type of noticing procedures that occur. For changes to approved projects, so this is after a project approved and if there's any changes to it, specifying the procedures for consideration of these, making sure that there's specified procedures for minor changes to design review, just clarifying what that process is for that. Establish that zoning clearance as the follow-up permit to substantial conformity determinations rather than that land use permit. Again, the zoning clearance and the land use permit are both intended to check for conformance with the development code and any conditions of approval. Clarifying time limits for different, for substantial conformity for amendments, revising findings for amendments to projects to address conformance with applicable plans and consistency with environmental effects of the original approval rather than referring back to the original findings, which was kind of difficult and not reflective of kind of what was, kind of, what would be considered to adequately like determine whether an amendment was significant or not or appropriate. Consolidate redundant provisions with the coastal zone ordinance and then overall refine the guidelines for how planning staff determines whether something is just a minor change or whether it needs to go through a substantial conformity determination. And that's really to reflect in practice what staff has dealt with, how things have been determined, and also some identifying some clear thresholds to help staff make those determinations. And as well as have people aware of what could be considered a minor change versus a substantial conformity versus something that would need an amendment. And finally, permit laps and revocation. So the code currently has some language by which land use approvals that have been exercised become void and are automatically revoked. However, that, and that's for development authorized by a conditional use permit if it's been discontinued for more than 12 months. And an approval like that, once it's been expired, can't really just be automatically revoked without due process. And so the amendments put language in there for that due process of where there's notification, the decision maker needs to make findings, there's a public process and opportunity for appeal. So amendments revise current language to establish a provision that, right now it's tailored towards conditional use permits. The amendments put some general provisions for any permit or approval and what that process is if the county were to go through, to start to go through revocation procedure The director would be the review authority for revocation unless an appeal is filed or the director refers the decision to the planning commission or to the board of supervisors. or the director refers the decision to the planning commission or to the board of supervisors. That's a high-level summary of the amendments in there, and I'll pass it back to Alex for anything I missed.
Thanks, Martha. Okay. So we know, we just threw a lot at you. It's a lot of information to absorb, and as I mentioned at the beginning, you're certainly not expected to have it all understood and figured out by now. I'm going to have Mr. Singer here kind of walk through the next steps of the day. What I did want to just be clear on though is, again, today is a public workshop, we're not asking any action to be taken today. We will be coming back, we're currently scheduled to come back on October 29th, so in about six weeks, or five weeks, for an actual hearing on the item where you'd be making recommendations up to the board of supervisors who would be the ultimate decision-maker. What we've gone over today and what you will see in your packet and at the next hearing, this is a proposed set of amendments. So this is staff's proposal. It's certainly not a done deal, so if there are things that you take issue with, if any of the proposed amendments are giving you heartburn, you certainly have the opportunity to make comments today to give some initial direction. But ultimately, when we do come back, it'll be a formal recommendation that you'd be making up to the board. So if there are particular things that you want to see done differently or something that we don't move forward with or something maybe that we missed, you certainly have that ability and discretion to make those comments as part of your recommendation. So just wanted to make it clear that this isn't like fully baked, this is just staff's proposal for your consideration. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Singer, he can just kind of walk through what the rest of the morning will look like.
Yes, thank you. So again, we understand just how much that was, that we've given you even with a good high-level summary. That took a little while to get through, it's a lot of slides, it's a lot of material. We are sure you all have questions, we are sure the public, people watching have questions as well, and we'd like to have a good opportunity to discuss as much of that as we possibly can. So the thought is to have time now for the commissioners to ask questions, to try to clarify things you need, to try to get a better sense of whatever it is you may have heard right now that you have questions of, then open it up to public comment and questions. So, you know, normally in a hearing, it's just public comment, there isn't necessarily a lot of response to public comment, especially from staff. We make one response afterward, but we'd like to take it a little bit more one by one and respond to their questions to make sure that both they are informed as well as you. And then after that, come back for additional planning commission questions that you've thought of in the time or more discussion before we break out for the day. So with that, I think we can. As part of that, breaking out for those public questions, I think the majority of the public interested is on Zoom, so we'll have to have some method with that, but we also have the boards set up to kind of walk around, take a look at a little bit more in-depth, learn more about some of the specific things, ask some questions about those.
Yeah, so what we intend to do is after you've had your initial questions, we're going to do like a little breakout session essentially, where we'll have an opportunity for members of the public who are participating via Zoom to ask questions, like kind of in more of a one-on-one informal format. Or if your commission, as we do have these, these boards up here on the, around the room that if you have any specific sort of one-on-one questions you want to ask more directly, we can spend a little time going through that, depending on the level of interest. And then we'll come back to your commission, any members of the public who want to be able to do more formal comment on the mic can do that, and then we'll wrap it up with any comment or direction or feedback you all have.
So with that, I think we can open it up to questions from the commission, and we'll do our best to answer all of them.
Thank you so much. Also, thank you for the outstanding presentation, comprehensive and detailed and a bit much as it was. So thank you so much, and now I'll turn it over to, let's start with Commissioner Park.
I have a high-level and highly urgent request that we take a break. It's, we'll typically break between 10:00 and 10:30, and now it's 10:45, and I'm 72, I need a break.
Sounds totally reasonable. We'll break for 10.
Dean, after our short break, and it is now time for questions. So I'll look for my colleagues who are interested. Commissioner Park.
I could spend the day, but I'm not going to spend the day asking my own questions because other people need to ask theirs. But I do want to ask some questions. But first, I want to compliment you. This is extremely thorough review. And I was really kind of delighted because over the years, I've thought of certain things that needed addressing. And it's like you hit them all. And I thought, wow, that's really something. You really did. So I appreciate that. But my particular questions are four. And let me start. The first one is open space. And I think that's mentioned on slide nine and also 18 through 19. This will be a little bit of a vague question. That's why I'm starting with it. By way of background, we, of course, spent a lot of time on the housing element. A very important piece of the housing element for me was to sneak in some parks and get some parks. And that was hard to do. And we had an housing element where we decided we couldn't mention parks because the state would reject it. So we did it sort of through negotiations on the RecMaster plan. And we were able to have sort of a beauty contest of projects because we weren't going to approve every single project, which gave them motivation to cooperate on parks. And we went up with five parks in Goleta. So my concern is I want to always preserve that, things like that. And as we revitalize, reform the ordinance regarding open space and coverage and so forth, is that going to impact in some way the ability to get parks as part of those open space? By the way, I appreciated the change in the coverage requirement. I think that's very significant. I hope the public understands it, you know, that we can only have, what is it, 30% coverage in units? And it creates a lot of open space and what actually happens to it. And a lot of times, it goes to things that the developers like, but nobody else does. So that's why I'm looking for parks. Okay, so can you answer that question, Ms. Malara or anybody else? How will these changed open space requirements interrelate with efforts to get public open spaces, whether they're designated parks or not?
Commissioner Park through the chair. I would say the changes with regard to open space requirements for a residential project certainly wouldn't preclude the ability to get a public park component as part of a project. And I don't know that would have much influence at all. As was indicated in the presentation, our current open space requirement, the 40%, it's often areas of the site that are counting towards that or just landscaped areas or maybe like a creek or a steep slope that's undevelopable. So it doesn't, in reality, result in or equate to like usable open space like a community park might. We are making it clear that the open space could be for public or private in order to satisfy that requirement. And certainly, if a project were to come in and propose a couple acres or however much towards a public park, they would get full credit for that as part of meeting their new open space requirement. But it also envisions a scenario where, you know, a site might be pretty developed and dense with the 40 units, up to 40 units per acre. And so open space may need to be accommodated by things such as usable open space, things such as like a rooftop balcony or roof, sorry, rooftop deck that's open to all the residents of the project because maybe there's not sufficient space elsewhere for that gathering area. So it does bring in and sort of focus the attention on kind of usable amenity space to meet that open space requirement, which could certainly include public or private parks as part of that.
In general, in my review of at least the 17-page summary, it appeared to me that the changes in open space requirements were essentially neutral to the idea of publicly accessible open space. That's something I'm going to look at in detail, and we'll address it at the hearing. I want to move on now, but I appreciate your answer. Next thing is height. And an example of where I see that mentioned is on page nine or slide nine. And it looks to me, in general, we're going from 35 to 45 feet in height. And that doesn't alarm me. I think the worst thing that we have in general in planning is sprawl. And if we can have more concentrated buildings and more open space and deal with the traffic requirements that have to accommodate sprawl, all for the better. So I'm not alarmed by this. But it seems to me when you go from 35 to 45, you're basically saying the three-story height, that's quite the common thing in the South County or really everywhere in this county, is going to four-story. Am I right? Oh, by the way, I think that's what we have on the Isla Vista Loop and have had it for a long time, and we have it in other parts of Isla Vista.
Commissioner Park through the chair. So 35 feet, the current height limit for 35 feet gets you typically, depending on the design, it's almost just shy of three stories. What we see many times is a project coming in that has that level of density. They are asking for height modification because they are creeping over that 35 feet in order to get the three-story development. So we see that pretty typically. We'll see a lot of like 38, 40, 42-foot.
Yeah, we just saw it on Isla Vista.
And those are typically three-story developments. And so the pattern has been developers will use state density bonus incentive or concession or waivers from that 35-foot height limit to get them their three stories. And for several of the new, more dense developments that are coming through as part of the housing element rezones, those are typically looking at three-story apartments. Some four-story components certainly. But 45 feet, it could accommodate four stories. But often, if you really want to get a full four-story in, depending on the design, you might actually be exceeding 45 feet to accommodate that.
When you speak to a full four-story, are you referring to four stories on top of parking or are you including the parking?
That would be including the parking.
Yeah.
So the 45 feet would include if there are podium parking. But it certainly could accommodate up to potentially a four-story building. And what we're trying to do is just bring to light the fact that our ordinance is set up currently to where people are kind of forced to ask for concessions or waivers in order to facilitate their projects. And so setting ourselves up for success by making our ordinance written in a way to accommodate those types of projects for those denser development areas that where we want to see the housing without having to rely on incentives or concessions or waivers to get an exception to that. So where we're proposing to increase from 35 to 45 are the zones that are 20 units per acre or greater, so our rezone sites essentially, as well as our mixed-use zone at the foot of 154 along State Street. And then in some of our C2 zones, where it's not adjacent to residential or low-density residential, those could go up to 45 feet as well to accommodate mixed use. So it's not an across-the-board increase. It's really targeted at where we want to see and facilitate the higher-density housing.
Well, again, I'm not critical of it. I think it's important, though, that the public understand this is a substantive change. And I hope people do think about this and talk about it and come to our hearing on October 29th and address it instead of addressing it three months later when they say, oh, look what they did to us. Okay, let me move on. Here, I go to page 22 or rather slide 22, and we're talking about C2. And in general, this is in the area on allowing more residential mixed use on commercial projects. That seems like an obvious desire that we have. When we were looking at the housing element, there was a lot of discussion about, gosh, we're cramming these giant projects into eastern Goleta and Goleta, and yet we have a lot of potential for medium projects with these underused or unused commercial sites and old strip malls and things like that. And there was reasons why that couldn't happen in the housing element. But it looks like liberalizing those zones to include more residential development is a very positive thing that's desired. Now, on that particular slide, it talks about C2. And there's a lot of discussion about what it looks like when you go from pure commercial to commercial with mixed use, you know, ground floor commercial and upper stories and maybe separate buildings. But what does it say about switching from commercial with these giant parking lots to a strictly residential development, which I think would be desirable in some places because the commercial use is so underutilized?
Commissioner Park through the chair, and I can let others chip in if I miss anything. So for the C2 zone, the proposal is that you'd have to have at least 25% of the site remain in commercial. So you could have three-quarters residential, one-quarter commercial. There is no mandate that it be vertical mixed use in terms of having commercial on the ground floor and then residential above. You could have, it could accommodate more like horizontal mixed use where you could have a structure that is entirely commercial and then an adjacent structure that's entirely residential. So long as you maintain that 25% minimum for the non-residential piece. So that's the current proposal.
Well, I like, I like to talk about the good old days, going back to the early 1900s when you'd have, and you see this in parts of downtown Santa Barbara, you see it in a lot of other towns where you'll have a grocery store and a laundry and other things at street corners. And then you'll have houses of various sizes, and you'll have multifamily and so forth. It's a mixture that made for great neighborhoods and probably was a better design than the 1950s-style sprawling suburbs we went to. And what you're talking about would accommodate that. But I still would want to look at the potential for allowing a strictly residential use on a parcel that happens to be in a commercial zone as a potential source of housing. Because changing zoning altogether is a much more arduous process than just allowing certain uses within commercial zones. And it might be something like, if it's a commercial zone, I'm going to allow residential housing, but it's going to be employee housing for something that's related in that commercial zone. So it would, it could still be something that's related to commercial use. Okay, well, we'll address that more. My last question is going to deal with going from LUPs to ZCs, land use permits to zoning clearances on some things. And I realize that would be an important reform. But again, I want to bring it to the public's attention that it does something very important. That's on slide number 40, for those that are looking at their slides, an example of it, that is. And what was the context of that one? Well, I think it was with substantial conformity determinations. I think it comes up in revocations. It comes up in other things. Land use permits, as I understand it, are appealable. Zoning clearances, as I understand it, are not. Okay? So you might have an important substantial conformity determination, which today can be appealed, okay? But tomorrow couldn't be because it becomes a zoning clearance. And I think that wherever we have that change from land use permit to zoning clearance, the public should recognize that and realize you're losing a right to appeal. You're losing that right to get involved and get the matter off the desk of whoever deals with it for the director's determination, over to the planning commission, and ultimately to the board. You have any concerns about this, yea or nay?
Commissioner Park, all I can say is that's an accurate statement, that it would be shifting those from a non-appealable to a, or sorry, from an appealable to a non-appealable action. With regard specific to substantial conformity determinations, just so everyone's on the same page as what those are, it's a project that has already been approved. It's already gone through the discretionary approval process and any appeals and any public participation in that has already come and gone. And now they're coming in for a change. And we have specific criteria for what can fall under a substantial conformity determination. And really, they're intended to be minor, non-significant changes that, as the name suggests, substantially conform to the prior approval. So it's been a somewhat overburdened some process, cumbersome process, where these are minor changes and yet we have this follow-on land use permit that requires notice and appeal and a lot of additional process. So this is one of those instances where we are proposing that that be converted to a zoning clearance, given the nature or scope of those typical projects.
And I don't disagree with that. I wanted to just have an example of where moving from an LUP to a CC makes a difference in what that would be. So that's an example. But I kind of buy the idea of doing it there. We've run into this, and I'm not trying to branch into multi-hour discussion of the AEO, but just in the implementation where we get, oh, this takes an LUP to build a road to the campground. And when we've promised it's going to be something that doesn't take an LUP to build in the first place. So we just need to watch for these things. But I appreciate it. Madam Chair, those are my questions for now. I'm sure I'll have others, an infinite number of others, given this large substance of material. But that's enough for now.
Infinite? Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other questions? Commissioner Reed.
I have a few, and I appreciate the time I had to discuss some of these with Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Singer yesterday. I will reduce my comments about the process to minimal. But like I said, I find this process, found this a bit daunting considering these 745 pages, War and Peace, that arrived last week with the process of quite a group of county employees and consultants over a year and a half or longer. And it appears on our doorstep, and we're expected to at least pull out some degree of comprehension so we can address it at our meeting today. So I dutifully embarked on reading the summary, the 27-page summary, then sat down and tried to glean supporting information from the balance of the documents, also looking to reference changes in there with things on the outside. Spent about the balance of two days on that. Was grateful that some degree of enlightenment was provided when I got the copy for this presentation. Unfortunately, it arrived at about 4:00 yesterday, which brings us here. So I appreciate the visual presentation. It helps give some form. It helps give some form and shape and a better understanding of process. But I do have a number of questions that I gleaned during my time trudging through all of these pages. Some of them might be perhaps too detailed for this, but we'll just go and I'll bring up some of the ones I think are pertinent. First, starting with the presentation. When you look at the changes in ordinances and the stream mining and things, a couple of areas in my district, Orchid has a community plan. Los Alamos, I know there's existing plans for the area along Bell Street. I have concern, maybe I need not have concern. Will this, these changes produce, are they harmonious with the existing plans? Is there any likelihood they might produce some degree of conflict or concern with those existing plans? What do you see the relationship between these proposed actions and those existing plans with the result of a substantial body of work on the part of community members and county government?
Yeah, the community, there's, we don't have any concerns of inconsistencies with community plans. The community plans still hold, they're active, they're in line, and any of the changes are either clarify what's, the implementation of those community plans or is consistent with them.
Okay, thank you. I have another couple of questions based on your presentation. Just a couple of minor things. When we look at the CN zone, you're talking about a reduced front setback, et cetera, to accommodate development pattern of commercial uses located at street frontage, et cetera. You talk about a commercial property in Siskel. What's that talking about? The old store there that's been abandoned for like 20 years? Okay, because when you walk out the front door, you're practically already in the county right away. I just wonder if that's what that specific reference is from?
Commissioner Reed through the chair, that's correct. I think, maybe to quickly clarify, when we mention, you know, these locations throughout the county, it's locations where it's that zone, not necessarily making a comment on what's developed there. But yeah, there is a property in Siskel zoned neighborhood commercial, and it's that same, right on the street.
Similar situation then might apply to the C1 zone in Casmalia, which has a rather historic restaurant?
Correct.
Okay, I just, I wanted to know. Yeah, well, you know, so that's great. Thank you. I understand the C2 zone, the C3 zone. Now I have some other questions, maybe they're too specific or not. When we ever get a, when we get a body of changes like this, quite voluminous changes, one of the concerns a lot of members of the public have when we talk to them is that some of the, some of the actions that staff or bureaucracy take wind up having the impact of, have legislative effect, you know, essentially create changes in ordinance and things that most people would expect a legislative body like Board of Supervisors or maybe even the Planning Commission to have enacted or instructed them to do. And I just found some things that are embedded in there that brought that to my concern. As I mentioned yesterday, if we look at the oil and gas parts, section 88, the fact that the photovoltaics, you know, the one sentence was, it's on page 363, section 88, 35.59.020, "The regulation contained in this chapter shall apply to utility-scale solar voltaic facilities used for electrical power generation located in the Cuayama Valley rural region." And the "located in the Cuayama Valley rural region" is being eliminated, thereby apparently making that countywide?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. That's, I guess I could answer that in two parts. One is the overlay, there's still an overlay that is specific to Cuayama. So that overlay is not being amended with this text change. So until we take that, there's a separate effort, as you are aware, currently underway regarding utility-scale solar that would expand where it can occur within the county. As part of that effort, we will be proposing to amend that overlay or eliminate that overlay to broaden its applicability. That's not happening as part of this amendment. So until that happens, it would, utility-scale solar will continue to be limited to Cuayama. It's really just, in this instance, it's really just removing unnecessary text, really.
Okay, so this, this removal didn't come as a result of any direction by the board or anything, just kind of in anticipation of the change countywide, or just because it was redundant? Where did it come from? Who thought of it and why is just what I'm trying to ask?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. So we'll go back and double-check it, but my understanding is we just removed it because it was already limit, the location of the solar facilities were already limited to the Cuayama Valley through the overlay or through other provisions. So this was just redundant, just redundant text.
Okay, so just, just the process of lining this out doesn't immediately open up other vast expanses of our nice county range land to becoming a photovoltaic desert or something alike?
Correct. So one pattern in your code now is that things are repeated again and again and again and again and again. So we're looking to retain the, kind of the top level of that and then clean up the language that comes out of it, just overall hoping to make the code less complex.
And if we could look, I just noticed just another thing, this, some of these things generate feedback from neighbors, other things. When we look at the home occupations, you know, formerly, there's some modifications there, that's on page 343, talking about, formerly, they would be limited to one room of the residence, but now that's eliminated, it just needs to be inside. So it could be larger, but...
That's correct. Commissioner Reed through the chair. There is proposal to loosen that requirement up a little bit. There is still the other criterion standards in place that the home occupation needs to be secondary, subordinate into the primary residential use of the property and other standards that a home occupation need to comply with in terms of like whether or not you can have clients coming to your, to your home office or, you know, deliveries, advertising, things of that nature that are all intended to keep it accessory or secondary. So whether it happens in one bedroom or two bedrooms, or your dining room, or your living room, felt like that was an unnecessary requirement.
And that, that decision was made by?
Well, I guess, taking a step back, no decision has been made on any of this. This is just staff making a comprehensive proposal on where we see opportunities for improving our code, simplifying, streamlining.
By the same token, if someone on our commission or the Board of Supervisors doesn't notice that, and it gets approved, and it goes ahead, that almost has the effect of a legislative change, correct?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. I would say this whole exercise is a legislative change that we are participating in. So yes, the ultimate work product or the ultimate outcome of this ordinance amendment will be legislative update to our code. The point of coming to your commission, providing this presentation, the study session, and then returning next month is to be able to try to make you aware of the totality of all the changes, and certainly the ones that are more substantive. And with the hope and expectation, or that things that might have, might raise some concerns will get brought up through that hearing process and get resolved through that.
Yeah, because one of my goals is, being a commissioner, is to raise the level of transparency for the public on all the different sorts of changes to policy and regulation that we make to avoid a future situation in which some regulatory, something emerges and the public says, we never knew about that, where did that come from? So that's kind of the basis of my concerns. Or I want, I want to address the dog one, we did that before, the three dogs per, per house to three dogs per dwelling unit, although if I would live next door to one structure that had three dogs, then they put in 10 units, and suddenly I'm living next to 30 dogs, I could...
Have an issue?
Could have to be an issue. But, so that, that's pretty much the balance. I'd just like to support the highest level of transparency so that when these finally go forward, the public will have had an opportunity to look at all of them. And I would hope, maybe this is unrealistic, somewhere near the end of this process, we could come up with a comprehensive list of the changes that's something less than 750 pages, so we could finally kind of review and check off, and perhaps even the public could, you know. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed through the chair, if I might add, that's what we attempted to do with the summary document, is like pick out sort of a lot of the key issues. Of course, what might be of concern to one person might not be to another and vice versa. So I would say that's what we attempted to do with that document. And I think what we'll learn through today and through the future hearings is areas perhaps that we didn't think were significant that maybe are to some folks that we can make sure we highlight as we take this forward through the hearing process.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Martinez, please.
Yes, thank you. My question is kind of in the same area as Mr. Reed, but what I'm looking for is the battery facilities. I mean, you have solar in here. Are battery facilities under cogeneration facilities?
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. This ordinance amendment package does not touch battery energy storage facilities. It's not part of this package of amendments. That will be discussed when we take forward the utility-scale solar set of amendments later this year. But it's not any, it's not included in any of the package before you today.
Okay, because I see solar in here, so I'm just confused as to why not. If we have solar, oil, wind, why isn't some of that included in here? I mean, because we're trying to look forward, is what I'm, is what you're trying to accomplish here, and combine all these new housing elements and all that? Or is it just have to do with housing elements we're dealing with here?
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. Certainly, the focus is on streamline our existing processes and procedures as opposed to introducing new elements such as battery storage. So we tried to avoid scope creep as much as possible by not taking on anything that were sort of justifies its own separate set of amendments or its own separate process. So as, you know, in full transparency, not trying to like sneak in new provisions for battery energy storage in this large comprehensive ordinance package.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I've seen in the past, and not in this county, but I've seen in other counties where I've dealt with it, is that battery facilities are presented as solar projects. And then they go through that process of being advertised as such, and then surprise, they are actually battery projects. So we're not, we're not, that's, that's, that's not something that happens here in our county under these things, is it?
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. I guess what I would say is, that's not being addressed as part of this ordinance package. I would say that's a separate issue. And I can say that when we, as we're developing the separate ordinance amendments pertaining to solar facilities and projects, that battery energy storage is being addressed in part, as part of that package. So you will have an opportunity to, when we take forward that separate package, to discuss and raise issues with that, or any concerns you might have. I think we are seeing the technology and development trends are that with solar development, you do tend to see battery storage as a component of those projects. And then there's certainly those handful of standalone battery energy storage projects. But I guess I would just say that that's a whole separate conversation and not something that is being impacted or influenced by the package that we're covering today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would just say that, once again, that I can't thank you too much for how comprehensive this has been, not only in the changes in the actual document, but the summary document, the presentation, and now the, I see all the visuals here. I guess, I mean, obviously, I have a lot of work to do, and I appreciate all the help you've already offered. So I know we can all reach out to you going forward. I just wonder, I look at the displays, and I can't wait to take a look at them, but in the interest of the transparency and the communication that we have already made a commitment to going forward, I wonder if there's a way that perhaps this display could actually be on display for us and for the public at some point between now and October 29th?
Chair Ford, I can say that the boards that are put up around this room, though we know those on Zoom can't see them, they all have been uploaded, along with the presentation that we gave today, or the slides of which at least. So those are all available on the county planning department's website for any member of the public to scroll through the boards as well and read them and view them in that way.
The ones behind you also?
Correct.
Okay. Anyway, I think, I think they're, they look like they'll be very helpful to all of us, and because of the size, if not only the content. But anyway, just something to consider. Thank you. So with that, and I see no further questions, I guess we could go on to the next part of our workshop?
Yes, thank you, Chair Ford. The next part will be to get some questions from the public. Again, we understand that they will have probably as many questions as you've all had on this. They're primarily here by Zoom, we do have one person in attendance. I think we'll do it in kind of a, we'll call on them, allow them to ask a question, provide an answer, and cycle through as they have questions. We would invite the commissioners at this time also to walk around, view the boards, discuss more. There'll be time after the public has asked questions to come back. You may have, you may look at a board, have a question, discuss it, but then want to discuss it publicly as well. So there'll be time for that. But for those on Zoom, if you do have questions, and again, this will be time for questions, clarifications, not comments of support or anything like that, but to get answers from staff, please raise your hand on Zoom. We will call and unmute you on our end, kind of go one by one, and work through. Again, it will be one question, we'll provide an answer, we'll move on to the next person. If you have more than one question, please feel free to raise your hand again, and we will just try to cycle through until we've exhausted all questions that those on Zoom have had. It'll be played out loud in the room, similar to how we do public comments, so the commissioners will hear them as well, hear our responses as well. And then, once we have worked through the questions, we'll come back for more questions or discussion from the commission. As Chair Ford kind of asked about and was mentioned, those Zoom participants can't see the boards. There are a number of boards around the hearing room. Those are all available on our website, along with the slides that were presented earlier. So those on Zoom, feel free to reference them if you have a question. We can pull up them, pull them up on our end to respond to those as well. With that, any, I guess, questions from the commission on how this is going to work before we move forward? And again, you're welcome to stay seated and listen to the questions, or get up, walk around the room a little bit. We'll be here as well to answer questions you may have on the boards while we're answering questions on Zoom as well.
My initial thought is that we should... My initial thought is that we should listen to the questions and, and understand the responses too, and then we can get up and move. Will that work for the rest of you? Nodding, nodding. Yes, great.
But couldn't we do both at the same time? I can hear while I'm walking, but whichever, I'm, I'm, I'll do whatever anybody wants.
Maybe we can leave it up to individual commissioners how you want to do it. If you want to sit and listen to questions and then take a little bit of a walk around after you feel like you've heard them. Or if you want to walk around and look at the boards while the questions are being asked. I don't know that we need to restrict the commissioners one way or the other on those.
I like that. So if you feel like getting up and moving and checking these out, otherwise we'll stay seated and see what kind of questions we have from the public. Please.
As we do have one person in attendance, I'm sorry, I don't know that you have any, you have no questions? Sounds good, then we will not worry about including you in this cycle. So again, for those on Zoom, if you do have a question that you'd like staff to consider and respond to, please go ahead and raise your hand and we'll call on you to answer those questions. Up first, I don't know who it may be speaking for, but we have the Citizens Planning Association. We have unmuted you on our end, please go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, good morning. My name is Mary Ellen Brooks and I am still president of Citizens Planning Association. We did receive, and we're very pleased to receive the notice about today's workshop. We hadn't realized that this whole process that had been going on, you know, at least for staff, you know, for the last year. And we do appreciate all the work that went into it. I think what our concern would be, I don't really have a specific question this morning, and I'll make this brief. We just want to make sure that streamlining does not mean eliminating in any form of the possibilities of public input and transparency. I'm very pleased to hear this morning already. I think all the commissioners, you know, spoke to that issue. So I understand there's another meeting coming up on the 29th when we might have more specific questions. And um, we've been really concerned for the last two years because of what we've seen as an erosion in the public process, you know, with the state housing element. Again, we're just, that word streamlining, as long as, you know, it goes from 700 pages to 400. But you know, in no way do we want to see the public not participating in, in this lengthy process. We also want to make sure that unlike what seems to be happening with a lot of the state housing legislation, we do not want to see any weakening of SEQA at this level, if that can be preserved. I was very pleased to hear the question about community plans and the respect for community plans as you go through this process. That's about all I have today. Thank you very much for your efforts. And I do look forward to seeing the slides and other material online. We will always go online and try to read as much as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, if there's anyone else attending on Zoom who does have a question on this, again, please feel free to raise your hand. If you don't have any questions from anyone on Zoom, we can also provide this time for public comment to make any other statements about it as members of the public wish. But if there are any questions, please raise your hand and we will call on you. Seeing no hands raised, we can maybe leave this up for a few more minutes to get any late questions. But maybe this would be a great time for planning commissioners to walk around, look at some of the boards and we can check back from time to time to see if anyone has raised their hand.
Please let us know if someone raises their hand. Otherwise, let's take a look at the boards. Okay, we're all back on the dais. Mr. Singer, any other thoughts or questions?
Madam Chair, before Mr. Singer provides concluding thoughts, we just want to go back on the record. If there were any comments or discussions that occurred off the dais that we'd want to capture for the record. So I know we went off the mics and there was some conversation. So if any of the planning commissioners wanted to share information that they learned or observed while they were doing the walk around, this would be an appropriate time to share those comments or thoughts.
I was actually going to say, that's why I didn't go around looking at the thing. So I don't have to comment.
And that's why I walked around alone?
Well, I commented on all sorts of things, but they're not necessarily appropriate to discuss here. But, but one is, one is. And, and this picks up on Chairman Ford's uh, mention of possibly leaving these up on display somewhere or having them on display. And, and you know, I wanted to look at them and see if I had a different reaction, if I processed them differently than just simply look and say at the, at the slideshow. And the answer was yes, for me. And uh, seeing them in that sort of summary form and comparing them like you can with charts was very useful. And uh, I would like to see these on display somewhere, hallway of this building. We've done things like that. And I, I think that public members could at their, at their leisure, take the opportunity to review these things, get the gist of what we're doing. It would be a great gesture to the public to put these on display for a long time prior to that, is it October 29 hearing? So that's something I'd like to ask if we could do it. And I hope to hear if other commissioners like the idea too.
Commissioner Park through the chair. It's something that we can certainly inquire about. We don't really control the lobby. So we'd have to talk with those who do to see if there's space where we can leave those up. Alternatively, although smaller space, we could leave them up in some of our public areas of our department's office, whether that be the reception or perhaps up at our zoning counter where we do have public coming and going. But it's something we can certainly look into and see what would be practicable.
That sounds great. Really appreciate it. Any other questions, concerns, clarifications?
I have one.
Please.
Thank you. I'd, I'd appreciate if there could be, I know this is so voluminous and this would help me understand this thing is that I'd be interested in wearing, where the discretion are given to the director in this matter. And I'm going to give you an example on page 364, attachment B. It reads, where the director is identifying, where, where the director is the identified review authority. The director with affirmative consent from the applicant may refer any application for a project to the planning commission for decision where, in the director's opinion, the public interest would be better served by a planning commission public hearing in action, period. The director's decision to refer or not to refer an application to the planning commission is final and not subject to appeal. That, that seems, I personally don't like the wording in here, but I see some tangents in it. But I'm interested in provisions like that where things are no longer becoming to us. I understand like, in fact, I can even relate back to, I don't know if it was last week or the last meeting or the meeting before that where there was just this complete baseless appeal that was made to us. And I think it was even commented about us. I don't know if that's trying to address those kind of issues or if it's addressing some other issues, which is what I'm looking for. Maybe it's an issue that I find an interest in, maybe not. I mean, that, that's, this kind of stuff, I would really be interested in.
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. What, what we can do is consolidate where decisions are being downshifted from say the zoning administrator or planning commission to the director, just so it's all in one place. Right now, it's kind of sprinkled.
Yeah.
So when we come back to you at the next meeting, we can be clearer in, in where that's being proposed to occur as well as speak more to the, the issue, the, the language that you just were referencing.
Yeah, because I kept on reflecting back on that. It was in San Andres, I think, in regards to it, where somebody was building an addition to it and they were getting appealed. And everybody was like, wow, we, we came to this meeting for this one appeal, which was baseless. Thank you.
Commissioner Park.
Yes, this reminds me, and, and that's actually the value of having these, these, these display boards, that something I thought was significant when I first read the summary was the reform of the design review appeal process. Where now we can, I can't describe it very well now, but we, we wind up having planning commission determinations on land use issues, whatever kind of permit we're looking at. And then we'll wind up getting a separate appeal later on design review. And it, it seems kind of inefficient and it seems like sort of a, oh. For, for me, it's where I feel the least worthwhile in, in reviewing the professional architects and landscape architects decisions. And then I'm supposed to look at that on appeal. So I, I really like what you've done in consolidating those kind of appeals. What I'd like to know is have you had input from those design professionals that make up these design review boards on this? Is this something they like, don't like, don't care about? I'd like to hear about that, whether you, whether you have an answer now or on the 29th. Thank you.
Commissioner Park through the chair. We have not solicited direct feedback from the BARs. We do know just from past experience, there's often the struggle when a project has already been approved and then through potentially a lengthy public hearing process, and then it goes to design review for, for final approval. You know, the, how their BAR is somewhat boxed in at that point in terms of their purview. But it is true that we have seen many instances where someone who was perhaps unsuccessful in the appeal of the project and the permit entitlement, then used the, the design review approval as another opportunity to. approval as another opportunity to try to make their case on the design when it's really all the same project. So limiting, eliminating that double jeopardy is, is what's proposed and to help address that issue that has come up from time to time.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, would you like to wrap up the presentation workshop?
Certainly. Commissioner's chair, I don't know if you want to just do a last call for public comment. Otherwise, I think we can, since it was never officially closed, then we can go ahead and wrap it up.
Great point.
For those of you who'd like to provide public comment, go ahead and raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Seeing no hands raised.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Tuttle.
Yes, and just one closing reminder or invitation is, again, we realize it's a lot of information and possible to absorb it in one setting or one sitting. And so we just encourage you between now and when we do come back in October that if, in the meantime, you've had a chance to review anything further and anything, you have questions on any of it or clarification, certainly feel free to reach out to us, and we'd be happy to, to walk through it with you.
Commissioner Cooney.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, and good job on your opening effort. My concern, I just want to express it as a blanket matter, you know, we, we've been doing things one way or one way modified for years and years and years. And, and I, as I read these changes, it's really difficult for me to imagine how they might apply when I don't have the details on the development itself. And, and so, you know, I think it's basically a different set of tools, and, and much of it is better than the way it's been done, but I don't think it's likely that we'll have members of the public being able to absorb what staff is trying to do without having a specific project that we can apply the changes to. It's, it's just speculative, and we all have ideas on a perfect development, so I assume we can come up with different ideas on what should change. But it's, it's a matter of frustration for me that we, we were initially given a huge amount of documents to read without this kind of instruction from staff. I realize I probably should have taken the initiative to sit down with Mr. Tuttle, with whom I have a great relationship, and, and I would understand it better. But I just want to indicate that as much as the changes may be required, the process is something that I don't have confidence in at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Park.
I thought Commissioner Cooney's points were, were very interesting. And, and I think when you're talking about the process, you're talking about the process of approving this package, right? Okay. Let me make a suggestion, and I've done a lot of workshops. I think Commissioner Cooney is right. When we have actual examples in front of us to look at abstractions, then we understand them better. Maybe it just concentrates our attention better. And I know if I was holding a workshop to introduce this to constituents, just me, I might make up two or three hypotheticals. I've done that on rec master plan type workshops, and, and then run through those hypotheticals on how the various changes that are proposed would, would impact the consideration of that. You know, I might take a, I might take a, a Galita shopping center that's mixed use and that we're going to run through a change. I might take a, well, I can come up with other ones. But, but having two or three hypotheticals to go through at some point in this process, I think would be illuminating to the Commissioners, just as Commissioner Cooney suggested, but also to the public. I don't know when to do that, because I, I think we're scheduled for an actual hearing on the 29th. I almost wish that the 29th was a workshop as well. Okay.
Thank you. And Commissioner Reed.
Oh, I just, yeah, I was just formulating a question about, you know, for us, what are next steps? I know you just said, go home, study, consult staff. I think it would be enormously helpful, early in our discussion, we were talking about streamlining the decision-making process regarding Director-level decisions and Planning Commission decisions, and would it reduce public's ability to comment here and there? And you talked about putting together a chart or diagram listing where those are and what the effects. I would just want to get for each class of changes that are proposed here, if we could get a list of those with perhaps some references showing us where they are in here, something to help guide us in our, in our actions in an effort to learn and review this, some sort of structure we might follow? Because thus far, it's been somewhat random. Just if you could think about that, some, something to help us, guide us through our exploration of these 754 pages, and then the proposed, the classifications or the types of streamlining or changes, and then just to guide us to where those actually appear in here, so that by the time we're done, we would have some level of confidence that we had to address everything in this voluminous body of knowledge that we were supposed to have looked at.
Commissioner Reed through the chair. We can, we can do some work to try to make it a little bit more user-friendly, certainly.
I appreciate the questions and comments of my colleagues, too. I think as the newbie, I, I do feel like sometimes all I want to say is, could you give me an example, please? And so I hope that you'll leave us today not only with our gratitude, but with the understanding that we could use a little bit more structure and perhaps some examples or hypotheticals as we begin to consider the big issue before us on October 29th. And with that, seeing no further comments, I'll adjourn this meeting, and thank you very much.